All right, it's 8:00 PM on the button. Welcome to Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, July 27. As is the case in this pandemic world, our meeting is taking place via Zoom. That's true not only for the Village Board Meeting, but for the meetings of our boards and commissions. You can get information and the Zoom link for any of those meetings at our website, which is pleasantville-ny.gov. Our regular meetings are on the second and fourth Mondays of each month. And as a result, our next meeting is on Monday, August 10, second Monday in the month of August. Again, work session at 7:00, regular session at 8:00 PM, and our meetings will be on Zoom at that point. We are waiting, and likely will wait until the 11th hour for a word from the Governor about whether Zoom meetings will continue to be a legal meeting for us to meet. At the moment, we exist that way under an executive order that specifically allows it. So stay tuned on that front. We don't yet know the answer to that. A bunch of announcements to make. The first, obviously, is front and center for all of us, and that is the ongoing circumstance with Westchester County, its phased openings, and the coronavirus statistics. So, as you, I think, all know, we're well into Phase 4, which provides a lot of things opened at a partial level. Restaurants now with capacity-controlled interior dining, but things like theaters and lots of athletic and spa-type activities are still closed. The numbers in Westchester and the numbers in New York State continue to be positive. Within the county of Westchester, there's been a little bit of an uptick and an adjustment day-to-day, but certainly, all the indications are that we're doing pretty well. It is also clear, crystal clear at this point, that the most important thing all of us can do is wear masks in a public environment. I can say that, as perhaps all of you have noticed, lots and lots and lots of people are doing the right thing and wearing a mask that covers their mouth and their nose whenever they're in a public environment and whenever they're within six feet of people. There are also, sadly, plenty of people who are not doing that for reasons that elude me. Wearing a mask on your mouth and not your nose is not wearing a mask. Wear it over your entire face anytime you are near someone else. The CDC could not have been clearer in their announcement a couple of weeks ago that folks wearing masks is the single biggest thing we can do in order to get ourselves back on track. It's critically important for all of us. It's critically important for getting our kids back to school. It's critically important for starting to live a more normal life. It's a pain in the neck, but it is not too much to ask to wear a mask. So, a special shout-out to families and young people. I can say, in my experience downtown, the mask compliance among high school and middle school students is pretty darn close to zero. I'm sorry to suggest that because there certainly are some kids who are doing the right thing, but there is massive disinterest in wearing masks among that age group. So, glad to think people feel invulnerable. They're not. As we have seen recently in the incident that occurred at the Chafqua graduation and in the recent small outbreak that happened associated with the Mount Pleasant town pool, no age group is invulnerable, and everybody needs to wear a mask. So please, 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 wear a mask. I don't know how else to say it. Census 2020 continues. Right now, we're headed into a two-week period when there's going to be a serious, serious push about the census. Pleasantville is at something like 72% of people who have responded, which is actually a pretty decent number relative to the region and the nation. But obviously, the goal here is to count everybody. When there is an undercount, we all suffer. A lot of federal aid is based on population, and federal representation in Congress, in the House of Representatives, is based on population. And if our community and our county are undercounted, we all suffer. So, if you have not filled out the census, please go to census.gov and fill it out. It's incredibly easy, not a challenging venture at all. If you know people who might not have done it, bother them about it. Starting in a couple of weeks, census workers are going to fan out and start knocking on doors. That is a labor-intensive venture and one that I assume most people would prefer didn't happen. So, please fill out the census. Pleasantville is right around the edge of the top 10 in the county in terms of response rate. Let's make sure we get well into it and prove ourselves to be the Pleasantville that we know we are. Village elections are still expected to occur on September 15. Paul Alvarez, who gamely is with us every meeting, hello, Paul, is running unopposed. He would have been added to the board in April had we had a March election pandemic intervene. So stay tuned, and thanks again to Steve Lord for hanging on in indentured servitude. It only takes the pandemic to turn out to give you more runway. Pun intended, given the background he has chosen. As you know, we opened playgrounds again. When we opened playgrounds, we put the hoops back on the backboards. We had to go take the hoops off the backboards because of widespread violation of the rules. So, same story, guys. We really, 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 really want the world to be as normal as it can be. In order for the world to be as normal as it can be, we need people to follow the rules. So, on a happier note, Best of Westchester, run by Westchester Magazine, came out, and a long list of Pleasantville and nearby places are on the list of Westchester's best. Beach Hill Farm Equestrian Center, Pleasantville address even though they're just outside the village. Breaking Ground Dance Center, Chad David Cross Photography, Donna Muller Photography, Fat Root, Joseph McKell Salon, Gina Primavera, one of the colorists at Joseph McKell Salon, Grit Ninja, Karen Young Yoga at Breaking Ground Dance Center, Little Chocolate Shop, Lucy's Lounge, Phil the Magic Man, Plyables, Pleasantville Farmers Market, Pleasantville Music Festival, Pro Clinics Physical Therapy and Chiropractic, Second Mouse Cheese Shop, Southern Table, the Village Bookstore, Tom Salliano, Mount Pleasant Trustee, and Golf Pearl of the Pleasantville Country Club, Wooden Fire Restaurant on This Willing Cooking Studio, a pretty darn impressive list for a community of less than two square miles. So, congratulations to every one of those folks, and here's hoping that every one of them can get back into some sort of regular form of business as soon as they possibly can. As you know, we closed Wheeler Avenue on a trial basis several Saturday nights. We decided to suspend that, at least for the moment, in part because a number of the restaurants found it did not benefit them particularly. And so, as a result, we are not closing Wheeler at the moment on Saturday nights, but as you can see, we have left up the concrete barriers that are in several locations trying to help out restaurants which had no other option for outdoor dining. So, please patronize those folks. The Farmers Market has worked, as you know, tremendously hard in order to create a safe space, and they have now rolled out Farmers Market online. You can go to Farmers Market online and place an order anywhere from Tuesday at 7:00 PM to Thursday at 2:00 PM, and then your order, you can choose what you want from vendors that are offering stuff, line it up, pay for it, and then all you have to do is come to the market and pick it up. It's a great service, and the Farm Market at Busy Boots has set up a separate line for people just making a pickup of pre-existing orders, so you can zip yourself right in and out. So, go to pleasantvillfarmersmarket.org for more on that. It's an easy registration process and an easy way to think about what you might want to pick up for the weekend. So, congratulations to the Farm Market. Thanks for this and all the extraordinary work you guys have been doing. We occasionally wonder whether we see much back in federal benefits to our federal dollars, but in a small way, are happy to report the good news that the Jacob Burns Film Center received an NEA CARES Act grant that came from the National Endowment for the Arts. These are grants, funds that are non-matching funds and are used to support staff salaries, fees for artists, contractual personnel, and facilities costs. There were more than 3,100 eligible grantees, and only 855 received them. So, glad to hear that the Burns got that help at a time when they certainly can use it when they've had no opportunity to be open, and thanks very much to the National Endowment for the Arts. I'm talking on and on and on here, but worth noting that we are now in the hurricane season, and it is worth planning ahead a little bit. I encourage you to go to ready.gov. That's a federal site that offers very useful information about what people might do for planning for emergencies, so that you have your ducks in a row. And then also want to recommend to you alert.ny.gov. That is a location where you can sign up and register to the New York State Alert System and automatically get alerts if there are emergency alerts that affect your region. So, ready.gov and alert.ny.gov are two good places to go to. If you have a generator, it's worth checking it out to make sure that you have what you need and that it is properly prepped and safe for use this season. I can tell you, I did that and found that a colony of mice took up residence in my Honda inverter generator, and $200 later, it now works again. Mice are more resourceful than you can imagine. There are seven units at the Enclave at Pleasantville. That's the Toll Brothers Development on Washington Avenue that are part of the Affordable Housing Program. You can find information about the lottery for those seven townhouses at our website, If you meet the income requirements, you can apply based on the information you find at pleasantville-ny.gov. The deadline for applying is August 14. Again, full details are on the Village website. And then, lastly, a shout-out to our friends down the road at Berger's Hardware for all they do, and one of the things they recently did is made a generous donation of hand sanitizer to the Village Police Department. So, a shout-out to the folks at Berger's Hardware in Hawthorne, who helped lots of us fulfill the needs we have in our own homes and have manifested their generosity by giving our police a hand sanitizer. Can't think of anything else to say. Does anyone else have any announcements?
Just one quick shout-out. I wanted to thank our Superintendent of Public Works, Jeff Ikonom, who worked with the county while they were repaving Bedford Road, and we now have two new crosswalks, one at Clark Street and one at Great Oak Lane. And I posted about it on the Facebook page, and we got a lot of positive feedback about that.
The road looks great. Joe mentioned at the last meeting an inquiry about this concrete work that had appeared in a couple of places. It turns out that the county, for reasons unclear, decided after all these years that it was necessary to have a concrete pad at the locations where there is a county beeline busting.
Right.
So, that is what caused that new development in a couple of locations. So, again...
Also, they also, they did a lousy job. The concrete that they poured was all bubbly and not complete, and it was just not, it was really not a good job. And they tore it all up and put new, at least they did that. They put new concrete down in the crosswalks, not in the crosswalks, in the grass where they put the crossing from the sidewalk to the bus, you know? So they made it a little better.
Yeah. So I will say, as Nicole already mentioned, I think, all-in, kind of a disruptive project to do all the curb sidewalk and paving work that was done on Bedford Road by the county's contractor, but all-in, I think they worked pretty darn efficiently and did a really very, very nice job. As Joe always indicated, we're quick to repair stuff that wasn't crapped up this enough. So, sometimes we have plenty to complain about. In that case, I think a really, a pretty quick and impressive job was done. It turns out that the low-traffic world of a pandemic has at least some advantage. There ought to be some silver lining to this otherwise dark cloud that's hung all over us. So, any other announcements before we go to the resolutions?
Mr. Mayor, did you want to mention the Governor's announcement today about the bridges in Pleasantville?
So, we're working our way around what that actually means. There was an announcement today that a bunch of bridges in Westchester, including two on the Sawmill in Pleasantville, are going to be rebuilt, and Eric and Jeff Ikonom have reached out to say, news to us. What is it? So, as soon as we hear the answer to that, we'll let everybody know.
Fair enough. Thank you.
We're waiting on that answer still, Eric, right?
Yeah, yeah, we reached out, got the contacts at DOT, the supervisory engineer and project manager, and already reached out, so.
Yeah, I will say, it may be great news, it may not be great news, so stay tuned. You know, you would normally think we would know, but we don't. All right, Nicole, Resolution 140. Let me go share my screen. All right, have we got it? Can you see my screen?
I can see your screen. Yep. Well, so, let me just diminish this. Sorry, hold on a second, I can see there. All right. "Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the waiver of the late payment interest penalty associated with the first installment of the Village 2020-2021 tax bills through July 31, 2020 due to COVID-19-related circumstances for the following properties. Property ID 99.18-2-35, a late payment penalty of $140.24. Property ID 106-3-34, a late payment penalty of $113.50. And property 106.9-2-39, a late payment of $104.91."
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we had three circumstances where specific individuals incurred a late payment penalty that they asserted was specifically due to the limitations presented by the pandemic. Administration of the Treasurer's Office reached out and got advice from NICOM, and we've come to the view that it's appropriate in this case to approve these three waivers of penalty. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 141. Steve?
Steve is on mute, sorry. Okay, 141. "Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the closing of Capital Project H711.201/21780, Parkway Field ADA Walkway."
Is there a second?
Second.
So, I mentioned before, but I encourage folks who haven't sadly had very much reason to go down to Parkway Field, thank you to Jeff Ikonom and his team for planning and seeing to it that this was executed. We now have a paved walkway behind the new bleachers that connects the bridge at the lot on the Henkel side with the plaza by the restrooms on the entry side, and there's a little left, and we're closing the capital fund. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 142. Joe?
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meeting held on July 13, 2020."
Is there a second?
Second.
There they are, in all their glory. Just want to point out to folks who may be watching that we began that meeting with a presentation by Jasmine Graham of Sustainable Westchester about the Westchester Power Program. That's a community choice aggregation project, and it was a, I think, a really thorough presentation. Did we get that PDF up on the web, Eric and Irene?
Your screen isn't sharing, it's just blank.
Oh, sorry. Well, I'll get rid of this then. Do you see it again?
No, we just see novice.
Okay. At any rate, did we put the Sustainable Westchester presentation on the web, Eric and Irene?
We haven't, but we will.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. So, what's happening is...
Trying to do a dedicated, like, section for it.
Okay, that'd be great.
It's also, the whole meeting is on PCTV, on the website, PCTV76.org. So if people go to the website, PCTV76.org, they can watch the whole meeting.
All right, thank you for pointing that out, Shane. I should have actually pointed that out at the outset, that all of our meetings are available on video at PCTV76.org. All right, comments or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 143.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts a donation in the amount of $150 from Frank Stern for programs and services at the Clinton Street Center. Thank you, Frank."
Is there a second?
Second.
Happy news, obviously, to receive such a nice thing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Back to Nicole, 144.
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year 2020 effective May 31, 2020 is listed below. Budget transfers in the general fund, $11,469 from health insurance to unemployment insurance."
Is there a second?
Second.
This is the impact of furloughs for folks in Panther Club.
Got it.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 145. Steve?
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year 2021 is listed below. This increases revenue and expenses out of the capital fund, $150,000 from account H050.5031, inter-fund transfer from general fund over to H5197.201/21491, street resurfacing fiscal year 2021, and then $50,000 from H050.5031, inter-fund transfer from general fund over to H5410.201/21490, capital sidewalk project fiscal year 2021, for a total of $200,000."
Is there a second? Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved, 146. If I can get the screen to respond. There we go. 146. Joe?
"Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated July 27, 2020 for fiscal year 2021, covering check numbers 97839 to 97944. From the general fund, $243,427.73. From the water fund, $21,641.76. From the capital fund, $2,118. From the refuse fund, $16,050.67. And from the trust fund, $440, for a total of $283,678.16."
Is there a second?
Again.
And as is always the case, we have a hot link which anyone in the public can go to on our online agenda and click into the detail for all of those expenses. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Last but not least, David, if I can get, I don't know, novice.
"Authorizeding mayor or village administrator to execute a temporary license agreement with Pleasantville Lofts LLC to utilize portion of Cooley Street during the construction of 70 Memorial Plaza project, whereas Pleasantville Lofts LLC, owner of property located at 70 Memorial Plaza, seeks enter into a temporary license agreement with the village to utilize portion of Cooley Street and, whereas the area will be utilized for needed parking, staging, and construction-related activities for the project located at 70 Memorial Plaza. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Village of Pleasantville Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the mayor or the village administrator to execute the license agreement heretofore attached, subject to revisions deemed acceptable by the village attorney."
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is a follow-on to a discussion we had at our last meeting. Eric, you want to just give the quick overview?
Sure, if you could click into Exhibit A, it'd be helpful as well.
A lot of it, I think I gotta reshare here and share that. Got it?
Yep.
So, we are looking at the 13 spaces on Cooley Street that is outlined in purple.
This section right here.
That's correct. So, they have requested to utilize this through mid, this area through mid-October to park cars and stage some equipment.
Just a reference, Key Food is over here, Mediterranean is right here.
That's right. They are moving three to four months ahead of schedule right now, and this would help maintain that, and in the village's perspective, the quicker they get through this stage of the project, the better for the reduction of the impact of the project on the community. So, we have asked for a monthly fee that's based on what we charge for those parking spaces. We have a letter from Key Food that basically confirms and approves the use of their access point in the back there.
Which is this?
Yeah, to be utilized by 70 Memorial. So, again, this runs through mid-October.
Okay. So, and then just unrelated to this specific issue, just to remind folks who may not be aware or not have the whole story, Cooley Street here in front of Mediterranean, when this project's finished, will be a full-through street in two directions. So, that's going to get executed at the developer's expense, and I think it's going to be a significant improvement in circulation in the village because you'll have the capacity to get through here. In recent years, after we bought the Lane Plumbing Lot, you could sneak your way into the Lane Plumbing Lot out and through, but it certainly wasn't a straight shot. So, then the other thing that will happen when this is finished is that when the new building is complete, whereas up until now, the route from Memorial Plaza down to Cooley Street and to the area by Key Food has been a little bit of a grim trip through that alley and past the post office driveway and all, when this is all finished, there will be a really nicely-produced landscaped walkway that's actually on the developer's land but with a public easement for permanent use, so that you'll be able to walk in a dramatically nicer scene down along the new building to get between Cooley Street and Memorial Plaza. So, those are just a reminder of what's to come, unrelated to this specific matter. Clearly, as Eric already indicated, it's in everybody's benefit to get this done quickly, and in the category, again, of good things happen for bad reasons, we're in a position to give up these spaces without much difficulty because of the low demand for parking at the moment. All right, any other comments? Okay, let me get back to this. Are you seeing novice now? Have I got that?
Yep.
Clear away, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. So that was the end of our regular business. Anyone have any new subjects?
Can I just, again, emphasize the how helpful will be for parents to instruct, you know, their kids and urge them, particularly if they're over the age of 10, to wear masks as they're in public? There's been a little bit of incivility in the village that can be witnessed on Facebook caused by a question of, you know, should you move aside if someone else is not masked, or should they move aside? And it really shouldn't be a question we have to answer because we should all mask up, and if, you know, there's a primary care physician who's been working in a COVID unit in my family, one of my sisters, and, you know, who finds it incredible that somebody wouldn't look out for a 70-year-old or an 80-year-old, or in some cases, a 20- or 30-year-old in their village and protect them by wearing a mask. So please do, and please get your teenage kids too as well.
Thank you for that, David. All right, any other new business, or is there comment of any kind from the public? All right, two things I wanted to mention that we talked about in our work session before we sign off for the night. The first is that we're having a meeting with our Parks and Rec Advisory Board this week. week to talk about the process by which we might vet the question of what to do and how to do it at the Pleasantville Pool. We're at the point where some aspects of the pool's infrastructure are reaching end of life. A fairly significant project is required if we're going to undertake it, and lots of folks have expressed an interest in being involved in that. And we are going to craft a process, likely with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, in a leadership role with other members of a committee, but also cast a broad net and have a number of public sessions to talk about what you might like or not like at the Pleasantville Pool, and what the community's willingness is to pay to do it. So I encourage everybody to pay attention to that. We'll have more on that subject soon. And then the other thing to mention is that we've been back and forth, and tonight, as a group, ratified a preliminary outline for a review of our police policies. Governor Cuomo, let me just open this up here. Can folks see that now? Am I sharing? Got that?
Yep.
Governor Cuomo has established the guideline that every community that has a police force is required to undertake, by Executive Order 203, a review of its police department, comprehensive review of current police force deployment strategies, policies, procedures, and practices, and develop a plan to improve such deployments, et cetera, and to file a report with the New York State by April 1. So what we have all agreed to do is to establish a steering committee composed of the village board, the police chief, the police administration, and the village administration. And we have six areas of focus. Number one being the use of force policy and de-escalation guidelines, and number two being police training specifically focusing on diversity, inclusion, and racial bias. Item three, police complaint and review procedures. Item four, community policing practices. Item five, general outreach and communication. And item six, outreach to specific communities. Identified a long list of stakeholders that we're going to be reaching out to in the early fall, but we also have put together a rough schedule for what this might look like, and are envisioning having a public workshop sometime in the month of October, and then a second public workshop sometime in the month of December to talk about people's ideas, and then to start to get public feedback on the outline that's starting to develop, all with the idea of completing this process somewhere towards the end of February that gives us a little bit of flexibility towards the April 1 deadline if we need it. So at any rate, we're going to be inviting folks to comment and inviting folks to participate in various ways, including ultimately having a web portal where you can include comments, whatever it might turn out to be. So more on that soon. Two significant efforts, the police review and the review of the pool. With that, we will see you at our next regular meeting, which is on Monday, August 10. In the meantime, you can catch all of our past meetings at PCTV76.org. Thank you, Shane. Shout out to the Pleasantville School Board, which had its organizational meeting. Angela Vella re-elected, and Jill Grossman added to the board as a new board trustee. And congratulations to longtime trustee Larry Bose, who was elected as president of the school board for the coming year. So we look forward to working with all of you. Thank you, and good night.
We have the motion to close the meeting.
Oh, good point. Well, actually, a motion to go into executive session on matters of real estate.
Moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to sign off from the Zoom meeting, and then if the board members can call back in on the conference lines supplied by email, we'll have our executive session. Thank you all. Thanks for watching. Good night.